Mr. Garcia. Mr. Garcia.
On your call, Madam President.
Trenton City Council Meeting, October 3rd, 5:30 PM. This meeting is officially called to order. Let us stand for the flag salute. I. Adipent notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, to Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first-floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg.
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Presente.
Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Present y presente.
Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, clerk, present. Mr. Cologi, Legislative Council. And in for Mr. West Bridges is Palmer Richardson. Thank you. And Madam President, if you'd like, at this time, I can read the invocation.
Yes.
Almighty God, who holds them fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, as I understand it, is your wish to go into executive session?
Yes, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano. Councilman Harrison to go into executive session. Thank you. Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, we should go into executive session to the public. As I understand it, we do anticipate votes coming out of executive session this evening. Thank you.
Yes. And if a message could be put up on the monitor for the those watching Zoom that we are in executive session, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
And I didn't need minutes.
Can I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards. Vice President Figaro Kettinburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano. Be carried. Madam President, moving on with the agenda at this time. Uh, we've reached the point of public comment. We can have the public comment clipboard, please. And two, well, we'll sign those. Seven. And Madam President, it appears we have eight people listed for public comment. Uh, for that matter, public comment will be five minutes long and for each individual, you may address any item that you wish. Please understand the council is not obligated to respond. Our first individual for public comment this evening will be Lawrence White. Oh, in addition, please state your name and address for the record when you approach the microphone.
And please press the red button or the black button to turn the thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks. Good evening, council members and city professionals. My name is Lawrence White. I reside at 15 Renway in Howell, New Jersey. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Voter Choice New Jersey, which is bringing ranked choice voting to the Garden State. So I got involved with this effort four years ago because it's a fundamental election reform that will allow us to have better elections than we're experiencing today. And I'll explain briefly why. First of all, another name for RCV is instant runoff election. Each election guarantees a majority winner for every candidate race. And the way that that happens is that you get to rank your choices on the ballot. And say you have five candidates running for mayor. You get to rank them in your order of preference. You can rank one, you can rank some, or you can rank all the candidates. And then when the votes are tallied, you count everybody's first choice votes. If no one wins a majority, then the person who got the least amount of votes of the five candidates is eliminated from the race. But the people that voted for them are not because those second or third choice votes are then repopulated into the remaining candidates. And that process continues until you have a majority winner. The system guarantees a majority winner in every election. And that's why we have bills in the state legislature right now that will allow permissive use of ranked choice voting for local and school board elections. Because we have, right now, the only way you can run an election in the state of New Jersey is for a plurality winner. So these bills will allow us to expand those options so that we can institute ranked choice voting for local and school board elections. And we'll have a better way to vote. Now, I will say finally, that this is new to us. But Ireland and Australia have been using this system for over a century. And they're standing democracies of some vibrancy. So I think they got it figured out. All we have to do is jump on the wagon and join them. That's all I'm going to say, because there'll be others after me who will give you more insight. Thank you for your time.
Hal T. Hamilton, Jr.
Uh, it is my understanding that Councilwoman Frisbee is in the process of proposing an ordinance to institute ranked choice or instant runoff voting in this city. As an inhabitant of Trenton and indeed of-
Sir, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry. Hal Hamilton, Jr., 415 Clearfield Avenue, Trenton. As an inhabitant of Trenton and indeed of Councilwoman Frisbee's own West Ward, I would like to express my support for that system of voting. Unlike the standard simple majority or first past the post method, it eliminates the need for separate runoff elections, such as the city has experienced recently, and allows each voter to vote his conscience in an election that has more than two candidates without wasting his vote or being accused of spoiling the election. I hope that the system will be implemented.
Ryan, is that Velella? Understood. Renee Steinhagen.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing us this public comment. My name is Renee Steinhagen, S-T-E-I-N-H-A-G-E-N. I'm a resident of Jersey City, 77 Hudson 1405. The Executive Director of New Jersey Appleseed Public Interest Law Center, which is supporting and helping to organize Voter Choice New Jersey in promoting ranked choice voting. Um, other people will be talking about the benefits of ranked choice voting from the perspective of the voter and also from the perspective of candidates in terms of ensuring that when you get elected, you're elected with over 50% of the support of your residents. Um, A, I think it's A4042 and S1622 um, are the bills that we are promoting. And they would enable municipalities to adopt ranked choice voting. This is not a mandate. This is not anything coming from on top. The bill is only an enabling bill. You're a locality, you're a function of state law, and you can only do what state law allows you to do. So the bill specifically is enabling. It is only regarding um municipal elections and school board elections. It is not involving the primary, okay? If you have primaries. Um, my understanding is that you're a nonpartisan municipality and you have runoffs. So as Larry has explained, one, we obviate the need to have runoffs when you use ranked choice voting, which saves quite a bit of resources. It also addresses the low participation that often happens in the runoff. The bill also has a very unique feature. It requires the approval of the voters. And the reason it has that is because we want the voters to decide that they want to use ranked choice voting. We don't want this to be imposed. So we are going around to municipalities and asking for their support to send a message to the state legislature that you, as the city council, supports offering the right to use ranked choice voting to your members. Right now, we have resolutions or what we call trigger ordinances from Hoboken, Jersey City, Red Bank, Princeton, which is also in Mercer County, and South Orange, Maplewood, and Montclair. So we're really looking forward to see if we can get your support and then get your state legislator's support to enable Trenton to offer its citizens the right to use ranked choice voting. Thank you.
Veronica Akazuma, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Veronica Akazua, A-K-A-E-Z-U-W-A. I live at 48 Poplar Street in Jersey City, New Jersey. And I too am here tonight to speak about ranked choice voting. Uh, I am also a member of Voter Choice New Jersey, which is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to ranked choice voting education and advocacy. Uh, ranked choice voting is, is not an effort, I want to just call this out. It's not an effort that helps any one political party. It doesn't necessarily help Democrats or Republicans. It does not play into a partisan divide. It's really about electing the candidate that has the most support from the voters. And because ranked choice voting, ranked choice voting empowers voters, a lot of people like this, a lot of young people like this. A lot of young people who have been disillusioned or disengaged from local government or politics are really seeing the benefit of ranked choice voting. People can vote their true preferences uh, without a fear of wasting their vote on a candidate who they like, but they don't think can win for whatever reason. So ranked choice voting uh allows people to vote their true heart. Uh, ranked choice voting also levels the playing field for candidates. Uh, often when you have elections with more than two people running, a third candidate is a threat in throwing their hat in the ring because of the fear of vote splitting, taking votes away from one of the other two candidates. And because of a lot of people who are not participating in elections and in New Jersey, there's a lot, there are uncontested elections. And that too is not good for a healthy democracy. We want people to run and we want voters to come out and express themselves. Uh, some of my colleagues have talked about the benefits of the instant runoff feature, which means that governments don't have to, they can save taxpayer dollars by not having a second election which costs millions of dollars for very low return on investment. You have very few people who come out to that second, second election and then just a small number of people are making a decision ultimately on who is going to lead um in that jurisdiction. Uh, another big benefit of ranked choice voting is that it reduces negative campaigning. Um, candidates are incentivized to build bridges or to um align with other candidates instead of disparaging their candidate. Why? Because these people want to earn the second choice, second preference votes from constituents. So it's no longer a winning strategy to tear down your opponents. And there's a lot of data on this because ranked choice voting isn't some new idea. Uh, ranked choice voting has been adopted or implemented in over 60 cities in the U.S. It's used in Maine, it's used in Alaska. Uh, some of those cities are San Francisco, New York. Um, there are a number in Utah, uh, in Vermont. Uh, and so this is really uh a system that is gaining momentum and traction. I also wanted to mention that Senator Shirley Turner, um, who represents this district, uh, is a sponsor of the state legislation, of the state bill. She is firmly behind ranked choice voting. Um, and we hope that the state's capital can also get behind ranked choice voting. Uh, part of the work we do is not only coming out to council meetings um, or working uh with organizations um to build awareness around ranked choice voting. We also hold voter education workshops. We do Rank the Beer at a local bar or restaurant. We do Rank the Sandwiches. We do Rank the Ice Cream. We go to universities and we engage with the young people and teach them about ranked choice voting. Uh, if I may, I'll use my five seconds left to pass out some information. May I approach? Yeah.
Sure. Certainly. We have our next individual for public comment is, is that Vern Walker? Vernon Walker?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Vernon Walker and I'm currently residing at 814 Paramount Avenue here in Trenton. And I'm a relatively new resident, actually just been here for two days and relocated from the wonderful city of Cambridge, Massachusetts. And the reason I bring up Cambridge, Massachusetts is because Cambridge is a city that has proportional representation or ranked choice voting. It has had ranked choice voting since 1940. And essentially, what we have seen in Cambridge is that there is a diverse representation of elected official. And I'm so elephant happy and hippopotamus glad to see that there is a diverse representation here at this city council, uh, representing this wonderful city of Trenton. Uh, and during my time in Massachusetts, I worked on the ballot campaign in 2020, uh, which voters, which ultimately didn't pass. But in some cities and towns in Massachusetts, we have ranked choice voting. And the reason that we have ranked choice voting and the reason that I'm uh, to support this effort, uh, and I'm glad you all are having uh, this hearing dedicated to understanding the importance of ranked choice voting is because we know that ranked choice voting will lower the toxicity in our politics. Certainly, we see even on the national scene that there is a lot of mudslinging and toxicity uh, in the presidential election and in many of the different uh, U.S. elections across the country. And it really does not serve our democracy well. Uh, and I think the fundamental change that we need to address those issues toxicity is ranked choice voting. I've seen it in Cambridge where candidates work together uh, that have similar values and similar ideological positions. Hasn't realized that I may not be your voter's number one choice, but I can fight to be your vote, your, your voter's number, the voter's number two choice. Uh, and simply, simply put, that's one reason I think that this great city should adopt ranked choice voting. Another reason that I think that this city should adopt ranked choice voting is because of diversity. We know that during the preliminaries, when we have this first past the post system, it's easy for voters to get tuned out and turned off because one of the reasons is because they may not feel like their vote counts or matters. Well, ranked choice voting would address that and would deal at the heart of the matter to, and indicate to voters that every, yes, your voice matters and your vote counts. Uh, so we know that ranked choice voting will ensure that there are no throwaway votes. Another reason why I'm supportive of ranked choice voting in general is because we've heard it mentioned by one of, one of my colleagues here that the city, that cities can save substantial money by dropping the preliminary. We also know that uh, there is a real concern of vote, vote splitting. Uh, vote splitting will go away when voters can rank their back, their backup choices. We also know that ranked choice voting, as we alluded to a little bit earlier, uh, that encourages candidates to run more positive campaigns uh, because we have far, for so, for so long have seen the toxicity in many, many different elections. And simply put, we know that the state of Maine and Alaska, York City, uh, in fact, there's a hearing next week in the city of Boston. Uh, we know that this, around ranked choice voting, and we know that this is a growing movement and there's an appetite for ranked choice voting to be implemented across uh, many different cities and many different towns. And I think this is a great opportunity for this city. Uh, there's a, there's a saying on this, on the bridge here that Trenton makes the world takes. Well, I think this is a great opportunity for, for you all, for this city, to be a shining light, a city, a sit on a hill, a shining star, if you will. And I know that ranked choice voting has passed in a few different cities here in Mass, in, in New Jersey, uh, New Jersey City, Hoboken, Hoboken, I think that's how you say it. But any rate, I'm going to close with this, that I think is, is a great opportunity to fundamentally change, not only representation, but fundamentally change the engagement of voters. And historically, we've seen across this nation how vote preliminaries are low, usually have lower vote turnout. Well, I think ranked, ranked choice can be the panacea for that. And want to thank you all and thanks again. Thank you.
Candia Torres.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow Trenton residents. My name is Candia Torres. I stand before you today to address a pressing issue that has plagued our city for far too long. The rampant sale of properties to landlords who often neglect their responsibilities. In just one week, September 23rd to September 29th, about a staggering 57 homes were sold in Trenton. While this may seem like a positive sign, I cannot help but question the standards being upheld by these landlords. Are we truly benefiting from the influx of new property owners? How many of these homes were purchased by first-time buyers eager to build a future in our city? Or were they acquired by real estate companies with a history of neglecting their properties? If the latter is true, why are we allowing these landlords to continue purchasing homes while failing to meet basic standards of maintenance and occupancy? While we have an opportunity to transform, transform our city to create a thriving community where everyone can feel safe and secure, yet we continue to allow substandard housing to persist? Why are we not knocking on doors, offering classes to help residents invest in the abandoned homes that litter our streets? With millions of dollars in grant money, why are we so afraid to empower our residents to take ownership of their neighborhoods? Some may argue that residents should be more involved in these matters and meetings. I agree. But also, I cannot ignore the deep-seated mistrust that exists between many residents and our city government. The resale of properties raises serious concerns about the city's priorities and its commitment to the well-being of its citizens. We cannot afford to ignore the consequences of this neglect. Our alarmingly high and the decline of our housing stock only intensifies these challenges. Broken homes, violence, drug addiction, and homelessness are all symptoms of a deeper problem. A few weeks ago, we gathered to celebrate the legacy of Mayor Doug Palmer. His 20-year tenure was marked by challenges and triumphs, but he never wavered in his commitment to Trenton. Today, however, that torch, torch seems to have been dropped. We need a leader who will pick it up and continue the journey toward a brighter future. It is time for us to demand accountability for our landlords to invest our neighborhoods and to rebuild the trust between our city government and its residents. Let us work together to create a Trenton where everyone feels safe, valued, and empowered.
Ms. Torres, Ms. Torres, could you give us your address, please? Into the mic, honey, so it could be on record. Thank you.
239 Highland Avenue.
Thank you.
Howard Cook.
Good evening. My name's Howard Cook. Live at 36 North Eastfield Avenue in the West Ward. I'm here to inform the council that I lived in Trenton all my life. And I worked for the city of various places. But the other day, I was going through the park at West Trenton and I had an altercation with one of the park rangers. And it escalated where it shouldn't have went. Uh, he tried to make a left turn without putting his blinker on. And I went around him and then he swung in to make a left turn and almost hit me. So I told him, I said, he told me, watch, learn how to drive MF. I said, whoa, whoa, who are you talking to? And then it just escalated and kept going to your mother this, your daddy and suck, and all, all kinds of unnecessary thing. So I told him, I said, look, you're, you work for the city, you are a public employee. My taxes pay your salary. I shouldn't have to, you shouldn't talk to me like that or any person and you're in a public uh position. And he just went on and on. And so I asked for supervisor. There's no supervisor available in the park after 5:30. So I, I was, his coworker wouldn't give me his name. So I was told to come to the council meeting. I'm not saying that I want anything severe, but he should learn how or be trained how to approach the public because he's a public figure. Because like I said, I worked in, on the bridge commission on a, uh, uh, Delaware Joint Bridge Commission, and I know sometimes people do get you fussed. But you got to learn to swallow that, take it in, take it in your own private entity and then cuss me out, you know? So I, you know, I just wanted the council to know that I didn't appreciate it. And like I said, I, he should, like I said, learn how to approach the public. That's all. Thank you.
Madam President, that's all the individuals I have for public comment listed at this time. If it's your wish, you can start with any councilperson for civic comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
I have no comment tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison.
I have no comment either. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being present. Um, just a really quick uh things. Everyone that spoke today, thank you so much for being here and speaking to Mr. and speaking to Mr. Cook. I am sad to hear that that occurred to you. As you said, no one should be treated that way at all. And hopefully I see someone over there talking to you. So hopefully we can get that taken care of, not taken care of, but just more so of more training. Because we don't want, I know for all of us, we don't want to be spoken to in such a manner. So I would hope that none of our employees are doing the same thing. So thank you for speaking up and I'm apologizing that you had to go through that experience. Just a quick couple of announcements. October 12th is Trenton Heights Homecoming. We will be doing an unveiling for Sharon Grady renaming the athletic complex after her. So if you are free to come out, please join us at 10:30 AM at Trenton Heights parking lot. Also this Saturday at Mount Zion, we will be having a voting machine demonstration for anyone who would like to make sure you properly know how to cast your ballots in this upcoming election. We will have hands on training and experience. If you'd like to show up at Mount Zion this Saturday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Again, thank you for all for being here this evening. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President. Thank you. I was hoping Mr. Cook was going to stick around, but so I'll start with ranked choice voting. I want to thank all of those who came out, especially Mr. Hal Hamilton. I want to thank you as a representative for the city. Ranked choice voting is something that we had had in play two years ago. We would have been saved from the days, the weeks, the hours, the months that we had to endure, the financial situations that it took out of so many pockets during our election. So I'm hoping that we will be able to present this at our next meeting and we can move together in this. So again, thank you and thank you to Larry and all the others that came out this evening. I wanted to also speak to Ms. Torres. I am sorry for your experience that you had and I am hopeful. We, we are trying hard to change what, how the city has been doing things over the years. We are very aware that there are folks who come into our community and they want to do nothing but buy up our property, but they are not looking to enhance it. We are looking to change that so that the people, the residents of this city actually get to invest in their city and we want more homeowners than we want renters. So we are moving in that direction. We are aware of it and we are doing our best to change that. It is going to take a little bit of time, though we, please know that we are aware of that and we are doing our best to get that taken care of. So thank you for coming and talking about that this evening. Again, even though Mr. Cook is not here, I just want to say I am sorry that he had that experience. No one deserves to be disrespected like that and we, anyone, when you're in office, when you're in your uniform, be it mentally or you, you're wearing a uniform, when you're in uniform, when you're in your place of business, you lose the right immediately to be disrespectful to anyone. If you're home and you're doing whatever, you shouldn't be disrespectful then either. But if you are in, if you're in your place of business, your job is to be professional, even if the people in front of you are not professional. So I'm sorry to Mr. Cook who had that experience. I wish he had stayed. I wanted to get more information from him on that. I neglected to say on this past Tuesday, I want to just thank all of my colleagues again for helping, being in solidarity and passing the Doug Palmer Resolution. I'm so excited about that and I'm grateful for everyone's support, the hundreds of people who came out and just how that just went through seamlessly. With that said, I had, think that I am done. I'm going to read a portion of the city's mission statement, which is recognize, oh no, one other thing. This Tuesday, October 8th at 5:30, I will be having my West Ward Community Conversations at 5:30. So, and that is at the police station on Artiston and Hermitage at that corner. So please come out if you are available. There's a lot of information that is going to be coming out and it is voting season. It is time to vote. I see a lot of young faces in the audience tonight. Hello to all of you. I hope all of you have registered to vote. If you are 17 years of age, I love it, all thumbs up that you are registered to vote. I applaud you. If you know of anyone who is not, October 15th is the last day to register. Please tell somebody, drag them to over there, talk to NJ.gov, may have made sure that they register. But please, we want to make sure everybody comes out and November 5th, November 5th, did I say it, November 5th? November 5th, we need you to come out and we need you to take like five more of you with you and I want your voices to be heard. Your voices, that's your power. Don't ever give up your power. Don't sit down or don't sleep on it. Don't say, I'll get it to you next time. Every time you vote, it's registered. People know your voting record, whether we know it or not, is public record. If you don't know it, now you do. Every time you vote, it is, it is documented and anybody can look that up. Who you vote for, that's not documented. You don't, that's not public. But who, when you, if you vote, that is documented. So please vote, please vote, please vote, please register somebody else to vote. And I'm running out of my time. So, oh, did I say please vote? October 15th is the last time to register. Our city's mission statement portion is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We're committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. Thank you all for coming out and have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to first start my comments off on some of the public comments that were made today regarding ranked choice voting. This is something that is new to me as of like a year ago. There was a political guru, I like to label him as James G., who talked to me about this about a year ago, but very few municipalities have it in the country, less than 50 out of over 19,000. So little information to research, but I'm doing my due diligence because Councilwoman Frisbee did bring this to my attention to ask for, you know, our support and due diligence to do our research. So I am also doing that. But I hope that, you know, in our talks that we are communicating to the County Board of Elections and some of our local, how can I say, political organizations to see how they feel about it and get a consensus of Trentonian. So I do want to engage more with our residents to see how everyone feels and do my due diligence to do my research, to learn more about it. Want to say that Councilwoman Olympia from Lawrence Township is hosting a rally to support Haitians against some of the anti Semitic remarks that were made by former President Trump and about eating the cats and dogs. This will be happening this Sunday at the Trenton War Memorial from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And I believe this is with Assemblyman Herb, Herb, I can't remember how, he is running for Andy Kim, Congressman Andy Kim's seat right now. So if you have time this Sunday, come out to support the Unite with Haitians event, the Stop the Hate Rally from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM with councilmen from East Orange, Bergen, I can't pronounce that, I'm sorry. Thank you. And thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Homeownership. There is something that the city is working on right now that the mayor and our interim room, HED Director Archliston had mentioned to us several times about the hopes of designating and getting the support to designate the city as a rehabilitation zone. And what this does is it allows more opportunities for Trenton residents to partake in purchasing home ownership property, I'm sorry, city owned properties for home ownership purposes, not investment purposes. Even though we can't restrict our property sales specifically for our Trenton residents, but this rehabilitation designation would allow them to fairly be able to compete against investors who are coming in and turning a lot of our properties into rental properties. So to help with homeownership, I, I would strongly encourage that we move forward with designating the city as a rehabilitation zone so that Trenton residents can participate in our economy and be protected against price gouging with our rental rates that we're seeing here, even though we just recently amended our Chapter 222 to cap rental rates. But there isn't a New Jersey law that protects that. So our city ordinance is going to do its due diligence and we're doing the best we can to get that information out there to protect our renters from being price gouged and outpriced of our community. So I just wanted to speak on that a little bit about homeownership and some of the things that we're actively doing. And lastly, of course, echoing the sentiments of Councilwoman Frisbee, register to vote. I want to go deeper into that because we have a habit of only voting in presidential elections. And if that's the only time you're voting is every four years, chances are your voter status will be put to inactive. And sometimes you will go to the polls and you won't show up in the register to be able to vote because you are considered an inactive voter. So there is a tool online that you can go to, simply Google, check my voter registration status in New Jersey and you can look up your voter, your voter information to see where you're registered at. You may have moved. You can change all of that online, not just register to vote, but check your voter status to make sure it's up to date. So when you show up at the polls, either during early voting from October 26th to November 3rd or on Election Day, November 5th, you won't have any problems. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Council Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg.
Thank you, CP. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, like I, I believe in wholly giving people credit where it's due. The city of Trenton, you know, we, they, they take a salary to do jobs within the city, but sometimes they go above and beyond. And when they get things done, I just want to make sure I'm recognizing them. I just want to thank the city of Trenton for getting the, the no parking yellow lines in front of Engine 3, Ladder 2 on South Broad Street. The fire department, that was very important and something that the firefighters have been asking for, for some time. And I also want to thank city of Trenton for getting the lines put out in front of South Stokely Avenue. Again, we have elders and differently challenged in that building and they're, people don't block where the ramp is there. So I want to thank the city of Trenton for getting those things done. And also there was a pole on the corner of Leroy Alley and Cedar Lane. There was two poles. One was leaning over and there was a bunch of wires hanging and that had been like that for about two years. And I just want to thank PSENG and Verizon for finally getting those things done. It did take a phone call personally to Verizon, but they did come out the very next day and they have gotten the job done. So I really want to say kudos to some of the work that's being done and that's, that's in part to some of the relationships that we are having with different individuals who can get these jobs done, you know, in, in a beneficial manner for our residents, which is what's so important. So kudos to them. Also, I wanted to, I wanted to kind of touch on the ranked choice voting. I, I definitely want to educate myself more on it. I think that it, where it can be a really great idea and where runoff elections are tedious and they are financially draining and nobody wants to have to go through a runoff, I do think that with some of the lack of voter education that we already have, it's going to take a lot of education for voters moving forward to kind of understand this concept. Especially when you have people on a ballot who are in an order, like one underneath the other and you're asking them to rank first, second, third, fourth choice, some people can just be confused and just kind of mark the, the top three, four people that they want or whatever, just in any order, not realizing, you know, that they're supposed to be ranking in an order that they want this person to be elected. So I think definitely needs a lot more education moving forward, especially in a city like Trenton with lower voter turnout. So, but I'm definitely curious to hear more about that. And thank you for those who presented that this evening. Other than that, Ms. Torres, I did want to address you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I do agree that a lot of these properties or most of these properties don't need to keep being accumulated by LLCs who are just going to rent them out and be slum lords. I am all for taxes being collected in the city, yes, but I do want strong investments in the community and I want our city's futures to be encouraged. And I do want more people within the city who have invested in the city already that are not already homeowners. I want them to, to be educated and versed on opportunities to purchase and invest in themselves and the city. So thank you for bringing that forward. And I do agree, you know, LLCs are purchasing way too many properties and they're not caring for their properties appropriately, not held to the same standard because a lot of the, their actions are unidentifiable sometimes. So thank you so much for that. Other than that, yes, Homecoming is coming up next Saturday. If you are TCHS alumni, please contact me or just show up for the parade on that date next Saturday at 10:30 AM and fall in line for the parade. I will be there representing the Alumni Association, but also Class of 99 and anybody else wants to come, I encourage you to do so. And on October 16th, I'm hosting a resource fair along with the city of Trenton and the county of Mercer at Mott School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, which would be great. There'd be a lot of information to be had. So I encourage people to come out and get those resources that are available and a lot of them mean money in your pocket. You know, a lot of resources that are not known to us that exist. With that being said, thank you all again for coming out and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you to everyone who has spoken. I believe that my council colleagues have adequately addressed everything that everyone had said. That being said, I am finished. Mr. Garcia, let us continue.
Certainly. Madam President, moving on to old business, we've reached the point, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications and petitions?
Yes, we have a motion to, yeah. I have a motion to approve communications and petitions.
So moved.
Second.
Noted. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Feliciano. Motion carried. And moving on, Madam President, we have ordinance for second reading, Ordinance 24-063, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton, Traffic One Way Street as it applies to Gerard Avenue and Avenue. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Go right ahead, man. State your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes to address.
Hello, Council. I won't be five minutes. I won't be long. Sherrell Snyder, 410 North Olden Avenue. And I'm also a community organizer with the East Trenton Collaborative. So on this ordinance, I just want to start with a story of a little girl that I was walking to school one day and once I get there, principal is out there, Principal Pereira and Freddie Alvaranz, who's the school liaison. And as I'm standing there, the traffic is crazy. We have parents coming in, flipping the bird to other parents and it's a two way street and it was terrible. So the principal said that he tried to get help with the city of Trenton to no avail. So East Trenton Collaborative gets involved with the help of the city of Trenton. We were told that we needed to get a petition and get people's signatures from these streets, Howden and Gerard Avenue to make one way and to also have speed bumps. So myself and my colleagues, we did that. We got the petition signed, we handed them in and today we are here. But I just want to say that the principal was really adamant about doing something in front of Darlene C. McKnight. I remember one day he calls to the office, Sherrell, it's crazy over here. One of my students just got hit. And this is an elementary school. I mean, I don't know if it's intermediate or elementary, but one of the students got hit and because of this, we are trying to make it safe in that neighborhood. And we also have other residents here, Mayor Finn, that's in favor of this as well. And I just want to say one other thing. October 12th, Trenton's Second Annual Lead Awareness Day and Community Barbecue. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time?
My name is Faith Ann Pearson. I moved into the neighborhood around 2011 and I saw this happening. I've been pushing and pushing since 2015 when we had a meeting with the mayor at a mayor's forum at the East Trenton Collaborative. I'm also on, on a lot of others, by the way. I'm sorry. I'm also on a lot of others, by the way. I'm sorry. I live at 83 Clag Avenue. I have been trying to push to have the one-way street so the school buses would open up their doors on the side of the street where the sidewalk is closest to the school. That's why Gerard needs to be from Cortland Avenue to St. Joe's and Howton from St. Joe's towards Cortland, because the school is in between the two. This way, the children will get off and get right onto the sidewalk and straight in. Having them one way, you have, it's only a 50-foot street. You have 15 feet on one side, 15 feet on the other side. You do not have 25 feet in between in order for two cars to come across. So you have one pulling over waiting. And like the lady said, there's people screaming and blowing horns. I think this ordinance is fantastic now. And now we will push to try to see if we can't get speed bumps also to also decrease the speed and allow for more slowing and more safety for our children.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattenberg.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving to Resolution 24-421. Resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of Pamela Bush Allen versus City of Trenton in a total amount of $100,000.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 422, excuse me, Resolution 24-422. Resolution authorizing settlement in the civil action in the matter of Shonda Williams versus City of Trenton in the amount of $50,000.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Noted. Vice President Figaro Kattenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Feliciano. Motion carried. Well, uh, excuse me, Resolution 24-423. Resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of Patricia Peters versus City of Trenton in a total amount of $75,000.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yeah.
Vice President Figaro Kattenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, we have an ordinance for first reading and introduction, Ordinance 24-064. Ordin, I'm sorry. Understood. And I see it was included on the consent agenda. It was only pushed until Thursday? Yep. Yep, we got it. I can always ask that, though. Madam President, we have Resolution 417, which was revised. Is that an item that you wish to roll call? It was included on the consent agenda. Thank you. Ordinance 24-064. Ordinance amending Trenton City Code, Section 2-23D, relating to the powers and duties of the city attorney. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve that ordinance?
I'm saying it at the same time. May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano. Motion carried. And Madam President, I believe those are all the items that I have on this docket. If it's your wish, you can ask for a motion to adjourn.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards. Vice President Figaro Kattenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Good night, everyone.